Mayor and Mary's the village clerk. And I told some of you, but as long as we're over again. We have departments in the village. Police Department, Water and Sewer, the Highway Public Works, and the Fire Department. And the Electric Department. The Electric Department and the Water and Sewer are not in your tax, in your mom and dad's taxes. It's separate, they pay for it as a user fee. We're a municipal electric police, which even makes it better for us. Because the electricity is much cheaper than in Long Lake or Serenac Lake. How much cheaper? Roughly. Four cents a kilowatt hour here to maybe sixteen and a half cents or more at those places. So a kilowatt hour, I don't know how long it is, but you probably, in the winter, you maybe spend twenty-five-hundred kilowatts. I'm saying, so it's a big difference. The Fire Department and the Police Department, we have contracts with two towns. We contract with the police for Tupper Lake and the Fire Department for Tupper Lake. And also with the Fire Department, we contract with the southern part of the town of Santa Clara. Which makes it nice because they give us money and they have a truck up there. They respond to fires up there, Santa Clara's up past the Fish Creek. And the town of Tupper Lake, we respond. Who lives outside the village? Does anybody know? Riley, you live outside the village.
Yeah.
So if there was a call on Byram Road, the police could go to it if the state troopers weren't around. So, these folks and Mary and I run the village, can run all those departments. The department heads are all standing up there looking pretty. And they look tough tonight, but they're in good shape.
Mayor would break him down.
When your parents, if you have a problem with water, sewer, electricity, fire, police, you call one of these guys. The chief is out tonight, he's with the truck that's driving Santa Claus around. And I asked him to stay on the truck so there's no, nobody gets hurt or anything. So, we're gonna start the meeting and we'll stand for the pleasure of the meeting. Who wants to lead? Lead us to the pledge. Stand and you can recite the pledge with us. Who I'll be with.
Pledge, ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start the public hearing, we always have a moment of silence for the safe return of phone calls before we stand. So the first order of business tonight is, before we do the public comment period, we have to open a public hearing to, I'll read the hearing notice. A notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Trustees, the village of Tupper Lake. Municipal Office Building, fifty-three Park Street, Tupper Lake, Town of Tupper Lake, Franklin County, on Wednesday, December eighteenth, at six P M. Concerning proposed local law number two of the year two thousand and nineteen, amendments to the Village Code, Chapter forty-eight, entitled Vehicles and Trappings. Take further notice, said local amendments to Chapter forty-eight, the code of New York will be to modify Section forty-eight-nine Parking prohibited. Handicapped parking, time limit parking, to create one new handicap parking space at fifty-three Park Street. And to eliminate one parking space at nineteen Main Street. At the aforementioned time and place, all persons interested in this matter shall come before us and speak and give us their ideas. I order the Village Board of Trustees, Mary Hesegood, Village Treasurer. So, with that, the hearing's open. To briefly summarize what I just said, we want to put a handicap spot in front of the village office. So people can get into the village office, pay their bills or ask questions to any of us here. And there's not one there now, we have to do this because it is on a state highway. This road in front of this office is state. And we want to take one down, down on Main Street in the junction, because it was there for Julian Maroon, David's aunt. Who was very handicapped and sick and we don't need it there anymore. The D O T wants to place it somewhere else. So, with that, does anyone have any comments?
Mayor, do we know where the new Main Street handicap spots going?
They are going to look and see about where it is. There's one further down, but we just don't go yet where. But wherever they want to place it, they have the authority to do it this long. So we'll just keep the hearing going a couple of minutes in case somebody walks in. But I think we can start with public comment period. This is a period we allow anybody to come in, to talk to us for three or four minutes, ask the board questions. If we don't have the answers, we give them the next day. And sometimes some of the people like the answers we give them, and sometimes they don't. But we try to do our best here. So, does anybody have any? Yes, ma'am.
I would like to thank the Board of Trustees for reappointing me for a new term on the Joint Planning Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We want to thank you for doing an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll have a ham and a turkey. For Christmas now.
Sir.
Yeah, from where I understand, the board has approved a twenty-six percent pay increase for the Electric Department? And they're getting another three percent increase in June of two thousand and twenty. And I am wondering how this is going to affect the village taxes? Not taxes, I'm sorry, because you just said before, it's not gonna, doesn't come out of taxes. How is it going to affect the morale of the other village departments? And how is this going to affect the electric rates?
I do. Thank you for bringing it to.
You're welcome.
Attention. First of all, I do want to say that first of all, we'd like to recognize that all of the employees in those Tupper Lake. In every department do a phenomenal job in that they are in every department. In regards to the wage increase, so to be competitive in this industry, we needed to bring their wages up. I'm not gonna put blame on past members of the boards that in years past, but their wages probably should have been increased throughout the years. To be competitive. These guys were making less than half than what the guys make in private sector, meaning grid and N I S E G, which are in our local areas. They make over fifty dollars an hour. And the guys here in Tupper Lake, doing the same exact job, made less than half of that. Okay? In order to retain these employees, you need to give them the appropriate wages for that industry. Okay? The one point I really want to drive home here, and this is for everybody. If the village of Tupper Lake cannot maintain the system, the Electric Department, maintain our electric system. We could potentially lose a contract with the New York Power Authority. And this would probably turn into the private sector, grid or N I S E G come in. And our electric rates would go up four hundred, potentially three to four hundred percent. So what we pay, as the mayor said, four cents kilowatt hour, we would pay sixteen cents a kilowatt hour. Our decision on this board was made because, for first of all, first of all, for that. For securing our lineman. Now, in regards to the department, we are already shorthanded. And we have lost a number of people in the past couple of years. One specifically because of their pay. He was lineman and we trained him, we trained all of our linemen. We invest thirty thousand dollars, over thirty thousand dollars in each one. And there's nothing that can hold them here. Okay? So in order to stay competitive in this field, we felt it was necessary to raise their rate, to be competitive. And there's still, I mean, I have comparative numbers. For the municipalities, there's about forty in the state. Right, Mike? About forty?
Right.
Tupper Lake was in the lowest, the lower, the bottom twenty-five percent.
Lower quarter, yeah.
Lowest quarter.
Yep.
And in actuality, with comparable municipalities, we have thirty-five hundred customers, roughly thereof. In the comparison of those municipalities, we were like the second lowest being paid. Okay? Comparatively locally, Lake Placid is our closest other municipality. And those guys are still making four or five dollars more an hour than what the raises are as of now.
Depending on the job category, four or five dollars more per hour depending on the job.
Yes.
After the increase.
After the increase. I don't think that it makes any sense to potentially lose our system. And the good thing that we have here in Tupper Lake, for the amount of money that we pay for our electric being as inexpensive as it is. Probably one of the, one of the least expensive in New York State to risk losing that. Because we're actually underpaying the gentlemen that are in that department. Is there any?
Yeah, and then being, being they are part of the village.
Okay.
Now, how is this affecting the rest of the other departments on their pay raises? Like the Police Department, who's actually under, they don't have enough police officers right now. But you do have a certain type of contract with them where they have to work a certain amount of time before they leave. Do they have that same type of contract with the Electric Department? Or should they have that same type of contract for training? So that way if they go to work for N I S E G or Niagara Mohawk, that they have to pay the village of Tupper Lake for the training?
Yes. So the reason the Police Department gets reimbursed is because that's by municipal law. Okay? And so you would have to have municipal law passed, like, to say, hey, statewide, anybody that leaves and goes to another municipality, to another electric department. So if somebody were to leave Tupper Lake and go over to Lake Placid, we would have to get reimbursed for their training. The problem is with the Electric Department is that they're leaving for private industry. They're not leaving to go to another municipality, they're leaving for private industry.
But it hasn't happened, just another review, but it has happened.
Yeah.
It's usually just left to New York, it's not here.
Has the Sheriff's Department, who's hired our police officer that we hired, have they reimbursed you guys for him yet?
He resigned.
He resigned from the Sheriff's Department?
No, he resigned from here, from here. So we have, we have our way to recoup our money. So there, just like in the regular world.
Interesting.
People go and get jobs and employers spend money to train them. And because we live here in America and have, you know, freedom, if you don't want to go to that job anymore, you don't have to. You can just go find another job, you can quit your job and don't even have to find another job in most cases. I mean, it's just, it's just the way it is. You know, it, we live in America and people are free to move and do what they want. And unfortunately, because this is a municipality and it's ran off from tax dollars and ratepayer dollars, it's public. But if this happened in the private world, it wouldn't, you know, you don't get to collect. You know, just because you went and got training at the village doesn't mean that the village can go and collect from your next employer. Only works in the Police Department, unfortunately. You know, as far as the Police Department's staffing, this board has worked very hard. Very hard to keep the staff up. So, back in the nineties when Eric was just coming up, I bet you when he took his test, there was probably three hundred guys taking that test. They probably had it in three different locations. Today, you might, well, how many people took that test last time? Fifty?
Fifty.
Fifty people. So, three hundred, a group of three hundred, now a group to fifty. Now, how many of those people pass? Now you're, now you're into a smaller group. So now you get them to pass, now they have to pass their, their physical, they have to pass their background, they have to pass the psychological examination. So now you're, you're taking that large pool and you've, this is pass test, we narrow it down to two people. Wow. That's all we can hire. We're short for it. But because of, because of the way, you don't get to just hire a police officer because they fill out an application, they have to take the civil service exam.
Exactly.
And there's a whole thing that comes through. So, when you look at the loss to the Police Department, the Police Department has lost probably three times as many people, staff, as any other department.
Do we have any pay raises right now for the Police Department to keep them? That is in the plans?
We, we are not losing police officers because of the pay.
Or is there any plans on any raises?
We just, we just negotiated a contract with the Police Department. Just like we just negotiated a contract with the Water and Sewer and every other department. What was going on in the Electric Department was something that was above and beyond what we normally see. And so we have to look forward to the future. You can't look at tomorrow and say, this is all we got. You have to look five, six years down the road. Now, before I got on this board, I came in and addressed the old board and told them, listen, we're not paying enough. We're not hiring enough guys and, and we're in trouble. And the board sat down, they looked at it, and the mayor called me up and said, you know what, Ron, you're right. And they tried to work it, but, you know, when you talk about giving these sorts of raises, if you don't think that there wasn't good, good debate. This is not something that you can discuss in public. Because it, it, it falls under the executive session rules. And so if you don't think that this board didn't, didn't debate this and take this very seriously and understand the repercussions of it, we understood. And people won't understand it.
That's why it's being asked.
We understood that. Some employees even are gonna be upset no matter what. But, you know, that's the electric industry. Eric's in the police industry, law enforcement. Mark, Mark's in Water and Sewer, you know, everybody, they're all different industries. And at each industry, there's a pay cap. So when we fix our electric rates, we go and they're set for us. We don't get to choose what the electric rates are, they're set for us. And they take all these things and they pack them together and that's how come we could give out those raises. Now, I can't turn around and give the Police Department seven, ten, twelve buck an hour raises because guess what? That's taxpayer money.
That's what I wanted to hear.
So, when you're talking taxpayer money, it's not ratepayer money.
And I am understanding this, so the reason why this is being asked is for education for the public.
And so, when you're talking about taxpayer money, we have to stay within a three percent, you know, we've got to stay within two percent tax gap. If you're three percent, guess what, we're going out the boat. Right? And it creates a big problem. So, any taxpayers out of their home, do you think the little taxpayers can afford a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollar expenditure just on, just on salaries? Because it, it, it snowballs, it's not just the salaries, it's the retirement, it's the workers' comp, all that stuff goes up. And so they, this is a, we're spinning a lot of plates here. And we're trying to do the best that we can and we try to be fair to every single employee, every single employee that comes through here. But, at the same time, you know, the Electric Department is a specialized deal. And you're competing against private industry and you're competing against other municipalities. You know? Not a whole lot of private police departments out there. And I'm not losing, I'm not losing employees in my department to Aquadina, so I think we're gonna be okay.
And I'm not saying to, just, I'm not saying that they don't deserve their money either. Because I think they do deserve their money.
And every employee, if I could pay, if I could pay every employee more money, I would. But I can't, I have to work within our budget and, and this is what we're doing here. And I can tell you that, you know, it, it, just because we live in Tupper Lake, doesn't mean we should be paid less.
You know, when you look up the civil service test for a police department, they say they make forty-five thousand dollars a year. Yeah, that's forty-five, we pay an extra forty thousand, it's about eighty-five thousand dollars per person that you hire in the village. Because we gotta pay for their health insurance and their retirement. It's not just forty thousand dollars, it's another forty thousand dollars that we pay into.
Jim, I'm like, go on, just elaborate a little. I just want to add something, but go ahead. Okay, just elaborate also, it's not unorthodox for the village of Tupper Lake to pay the Electric Department more than what it pays the other departments. This is, this is something that's common throughout other municipalities, that their linemen make more money. As Ron did say, his department, which is the Water and Sewer, is a losing Water and Sewer guys going to make double. I don't believe Bobby's department for the D P W is going somewhere where their dump truck driver is going to make, get paid double. Okay? With the Electric Department, that is, what was, that was the threat. And it is a threat, because like I said, if we lose our system, our rates will triple to quadruple. So if you have a, people go ballistic over a three hundred dollar electric bill, what if it was twelve hundred dollars? Okay? In regards to the rates, and as we said, we made it very clear, this has nothing to do with taxes, Electric Department is rate, rate driven. I can't say that the rates won't go up, because we don't have, we don't have power over that, that's the New York Power Authority, correct, Mike?
That's correct.
Okay. Let's just say it went up a cent a kilowatt hour. We pay four for our summer rates, I'm just gonna use summer rates because they're easier to use. They went up a cent, that's a twenty-five percent increase. If you go from four cents to sixteen cents, that's a four hundred percent increase. Okay? So, I think it would make, if our rates had to go up to make, to charge one more cent per kilowatt hour, to pay for these guys to stay. And in addition, we only have three linemen. And technically, Mike being the superintendent of the department is the first in a long time, I don't know when the last time the superintendent was actually one of the linemen in the county. When Mike graduated, uh, graduated line school in ninety.
I can't remember the year, twelve and a half years ago.
Oh, yeah, okay, so at two thousand, but anyway, you have what, six, six linemen, you made the seven?
That's what I wanted to add.
Okay, go ahead.
When I came, I worked for the D P Ws for two years. And when I got, when I changed departments, I went from the D P W to the Electric Department. I was hired to replace the seventh lineman that retired. So there were six when I started and I was there to replace seven. Currently, we're at three, counting myself. And like Clint just said, now that I'm the superintendent, previously, since I've worked there, the superintendent didn't do bucket work, which I still do. I'm on call every third week for the weekend. And in the past, less than two years, we lost one certified lineman and two that were very close to being done. And that's why we're at these numbers. So now you think about that, say the three of us are here, the rest of our crew, no matter, no matter what the number is, they can't go out on their own. Because they're not certified by OSHA regulations, they can't go out alone. They have to go out with a certified lineman. So in the middle of the night, if there's a call, there's three linemen here.
Excuse me, don't get nervous, it's not a scare, Santa Claus is coming to Tupper Lake. Put that paper.
So, if, for example, I have to go out of town, right? And this happened the other day, say I have to, it wasn't me, but say one of us has to leave town and one guy is sick. You have one lineman in Tupper Lake.
Okay, you see, and I understand, okay, now, now you're, you're talking about now being short, short, yeah, numbers of people. But so, so which means right now that there's actually space to hire more people in the Electric Department?
They're, they're, they're all hired now, they're all hired. They have to, they have to attend school for four years and apprentice for four years before they can become a certified lineman. They go two weeks in the spring and two weeks in the fall and they work in between for four years. And then they have to pass a test, then they have to pass a civil service exam also, before they can become a certified lineman in this department. So those guys have been hired. We have one that's finished his third year, he has one more year left, next year in the spring, he will start his fourth year. And we have three that just started. We have two that went one year, or I take that back, three that went one year and two more that are going to their first year. So the three will be in their second year and this coming spring, the other two will be in their first year. But, so now you're, you're three and a half to five years away from having, or three and a half to four years away from having the right amount of lineman here that you need.
Thank you.
I just want to sum it up so you understand. We know all our employees deserve fair raises, but here, what triggered this? One of the municipals in the western part of the state, the private electric companies bought the whole department out. Everybody left because they're making twice as much, it was out in Penyan, I think.
Penyan.
So, we don't want that to happen here. And it is a dangerous job. This afternoon, when you couldn't see, all our guys do dangerous jobs, don't get me wrong.
And I do, and I respect all of you for all the work that you guys do.
I don't want, I wouldn't come to the Electric Department because I don't want to play with two thousand volts of electricity or whatever it is.
Thirteen.
Thirteen thousand volts. But if Mark Robillard wants to hire me and I need a job someday, I can dig a ditch. But, I mean, my point is, it's a dangerous job.
I understand what you're saying.
And we are trying to protect our municipal rates here and we felt that was the way to do it. You did ask a question and these gentlemen touched on it.
I think you're good.
We have the money, we checked with our, the people who do the accounting for the electric budget. And we have enough money with the last pay raise, the last electric raise that went into effect, two and a half years ago, I think, or three now.
Two years ago.
Uh, to, to cover this. So we think we're in good shape, we want to keep these guys, we want to, we want everybody in the village to be safe and have low cost electric power. And that's why we did it. And I know, people have been talking about it all over town, but we did it without a lot of discussion, discussion, like Trustee Lascalas said. But we did it to preserve the integrity of our municipal electric system. And that's the story.
Okay, thank you.
It's a great question, thank you for asking.
And I just have one more question.
Yes, sir.
I see you guys have a fire, a fire truck going up for auction. Are you guys gonna put a minimum bid on it? Because the last fire truck that sold, I can't remember when it sold, but it's been, it's been online and it's public knowledge, sold for fifteen hundred dollars and is for sale. After it's been stripped down for ten thousand dollars. So I'm just wondering if you're gonna place a minimum bid or does anyone know what the fire truck is worth?
Well, Jim, here's the thing though, on that one that we sold for fifteen hundred bucks. So where are we gonna put it?
Well, someone in Tupper Lake might have wanted to buy it after fifteen hundred bucks, maybe I would have bought it.
It went up for auction, you could have put a bid on it.
But, but, okay, but we didn't know about it, you're right, it's been up for auction.
Everybody knew about it, it's a public auction.
But there should have been a minimum bid.
It's a public auction, but let me ask you, well, this is what I'm getting at, just because there was, when we did it, you know, there, there were, there were other board members that were not here that are no longer on the board. Okay? And there, and there was a big discussion about this. And so, here's the thing, so where are we gonna put the fire truck? And put it along the trail, park it out back?
Well, for fifteen hundred dollars, that's, that's what the tires are worth.
Jim, wait and listen to what I'm gonna say before you start getting all upset. All right? So we take this truck, because we have no buyers for it and we didn't get the bid that we want. And we stick it out, we stick it out back with, with the equipment, hoping that somebody's gonna come by it. Now, now it gets vandalized.
Well, vandalism, okay, now, now, why, why should it be vandalized? You're right at the Police Department right there.
No, no, Jim, because we're not parking it at the Police Department.
Okay, well vandalism, I don't think vandalism is a good angle to go up.
It is, Jim, it is, Jim, and I'll tell you why. Because now, now we got a fire truck that's sitting out there, Friday night, it gets vandalized. We got six windows broken, three, three tires slashed, now what do we do? Now we're out.
Now, now you call the police and you do an investigation and have the people charged.
And if you don't catch them, who's out the money, Jim?
Well, it's only fifteen hundred bucks.
It's only, exactly. So I'd rather get fifteen hundred bucks for something that's gonna sit there because it didn't sell. And I want to see how long that thing's been sitting there for ten thousand dollars that they're asking for. There's not really a lot of value in a used fire truck, believe it or not, there's not. People got a lot of great ideas, they, they, they said, oh, like, you could take it, you could make it, you could make it a wrecker, you could do this, you could do that, but that costs money. And you could do, you could do a lot of things with money, but some, some. We sat, it sat and we probably just said, we're gonna, we're gonna take this, this little bid because nobody's gonna buy it. And, and I guarantee it, we didn't take it, Jim, guess what? It'd still be there. And so now, so now, what, did, did we do the taxpayers any justice by, by keeping this truck parked out back?
I couldn't tell you because it hasn't happened. And to tell you the truth though, I think vandalism is a very, is not a very good route at coming up with an answer for that one.
Well, I, you and I have very different opinions, I can guarantee you that.
We are, we are looking at the value.
You know, we look at the value of the truck and we say, what do these things sell for? And they're not, the used fire trucks aren't selling for very much money, but.
We do have final say in, in this bid coming up.
We don't like the bid, we'll reject it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We'll do it in a public meeting.
And just to be official, I, I feel your pain, because I feel the same way. I'm, I'm, it's surprising to me that they sell for that little.
Well, that truck, that truck will not sell for that.
I mean, I mean, it is what it is.
And actually, I looked up, I looked up all their fire trucks online, believe it or not, and they got older, junkier fire trucks for sale for five, six thousand dollars.
I'd like to find that company.
But they pumped, Jim, this one don't pump, the one they're selling. They have to take that box off that truck and use it for some other.
Yeah, you know, I understand, like I say, fifteen hundred dollars and it was put online, thing is for sale for ten thousand dollars. So, that's just something to look at, that's factual.
You can only sit on a truck for so long.
That's factual.
It's not like a private business where you can sit it and put it out back and, and it could be behind the gate. We don't have any lock place to put it, we don't have covered storage for it, because when we get rid of a fire truck, we replace it. So it's not like there's an empty spot in the, in the garage. This is, uh, this is back when Tommy Snyder was on the board.
Oh, one six nine.
And that's it for me for tonight.
Okay, so, are there other public comments? Any, any students want to ask us any questions? We probably won't have an answer for you, but we'll try hard. Okay. Uh, before we move on, I want to close the public hearing, there's no more comments. on the public hearing, so we will send this on to the State Department of Transportation. The public hearing is closed on local law number two of two thousand and nineteen. Okay. I need a motion and a resolution sponsoring a shared services New York State ICA grant application for twenty twenty as proposed by us. Is there a motion, Trustee LaScala second, Trustee Hollingsworth, discussion? All those in favor, opposed, the ayes have it. I point this out to every class that comes in, if nobody on the board raises their hand to vote no, they'll report it as a yes. So if they don't say not nay, or no, or put their hand up no, it's a, it's a recording as a yes vote. Uh, I need a motion to approve the board minutes from November twentieth and December third of this year, meetings respectfully, Trustee LaScala, second, Trustee Maroon, any additions or deletions? All those in favor, opposed, the ayes have it. Code enforcement, Peter.
Yes.
Excuse me, so now each department is gonna give us a report of what went on the previous month, so we get an update if you haven't seen it already. Go ahead, Peter, code.
Okay, uh, building curmudgeons last month were four, site inspections thirty-six, phone complaints seven, fire calls zero, certificates of compliance one, building code related thirty-four, zoning twenty-one issues, dig requests one, office related forty-eight, and two violations issued, and, uh, now that we're getting into the winter months, I'm gonna start working on, uh, fire safety inspections and start on my year-end report shortly.
Questions for Peter, Trustee LaScala, a motion to accept, Trustee LaScala second, Trustee Maroon, uh, all those in favor of accepting the report? Opposed, the ayes have it. Peter, miscellaneous?
Nope, uh, that would be it for today.
Any questions for Peter, any of the board members?
So zombie houses, let's do it.
Uh, we did really well, we finished, actually, we just finished up our zombie grant, we're meeting with Melissa probably in the next week or two to finalize everything, so. Yeah, should have, but I put that on the next month's report when it's finalized with Melissa.
Okay.
You got the money, Chief. Well, go ahead, you got the money, you have the zombie grant lender?
Yeah, we got it.
We got half of it, the other half, we're just.
We didn't get the other half yet, is that what we get?
No, we're submitting for reimbursement.
Okay, does Mulholland have it though, or the shared company?
I think we gotta submit to the state and then we'll go.
You're up, Chief.
I'm up.
Yes, sir. Chief, proof.
November two thousand and nineteen report, total reported incidents a hundred and eighty-two, handled by notes nine, open door complaints, uh, says twelve rescue calls, four calls for utility companies, one assist to another agency, nine motor vehicle accident, eight alarms. Uh, we served eleven subpoenas, six D and D complaints.
Question, Trustee LaScala, second, Trustee Maroon, discussion? All those in favor of accepting the report as read, opposed, the ayes have it. Chief.
Uh, number two, authorization to post the Dodge Durango and the Chevy Tahoe on Oxy's International, the new police guard was supposed to be here last week, got sent to Ford for recalls on it before it even left, to be outfitted, so I'm expecting it any time, but we did take, uh, one of the older police guards, you know, and we converted that to our canine guard, so I wanna get rid of the two we have, but, uh, the Dodge Durango definitely needs to go, that, that thing is.
So what we'd like to do.
But the Chevy Tahoe, uh, in Taguan mark, he wants to look at it tomorrow, he's gonna be doing something possibly with a new camera, he's gonna be looking at a van, but maybe we can take the Dodge D out of that Tahoe we bought, that might work for him, so if that's the case.
So we'll, we'll allow both, but if we can use one in our own, on our own departments, we'll keep it here, put the other one up for auction.
But the Durango should go on.
And let me just bring everybody up to date, the question was asked earlier, we have sent a letter to the village of Malone requesting payment of eighteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents for a police officer that we had, we sent to school under municipal law, they have to stay with us for three years, he left early, so the village of Malone will have to pay us that money back, and that letter has been sent to the new mayor, Andrea Dumas of Malone, so that's how we try to get that back. Okay, David, fire.
Okay. All the twenty-two calls, four in the village, eleven in town, six in Santa Clara, had one mutual aid, structure fire in Serenac Lake that involved Upper Serenac to head over. Type of calls, eight alarm activations, one motor vehicle accident, eight trees down, and wires. Vehicle fire was one, structure fire was one, a bomb threat was one, and a mutual aid to Serenac Lake for that structure fire. Average members at the call was eleven, total hours spent at the calls were twenty and a half hours, and that's it.
Is there a motion to accept, Trustee Hollingsworth second, Trustee LaScala, all those in favor, opposed, the ayes have it.
Also, they want approval for membership of Mr. Kataya for the volunteer fire department at a Santa Clara subdivision.
Substation, uh, is there a motion, Trustee LaScala, second, Trustee Hollingsworth? This, so everybody understands, this is a, a fireman who will be a member of our department, and he's attached to the Santa Clara substation out by the dispatch district. All those in favor?
Um, John.
John.
Chris is talking.
All those in favor, opposed, the ayes have it, go ahead.
Also authorized to post a nineteen eighty-three Pierce pumper that was at the Upper Serenac Fire Station for Auctions International.
And I just wanna say to your com, this pumper failed the pump test, so it's no good to us as a pumper. So we're gonna see what we get on it, if we don't like the price, we'll reject it, and we're gonna try and come up with a floor bid to, to maximize the initial bid. So is there a motion to put this on, Trustee Maroon, Trustee LaScala second, all those in favor, opposed, the ayes have it.
Have we put new tires on that?
No.
No?
No.
I'm just curious, Mr. Mayor.
You're always curious. Authorized Mayor Maroon to execute a five-year fire protection agreement with the town of Santa Clara as proposed.
Trustee LaScala second, Trustee Maroon, uh, Trustee LeBlanc.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, my God. We'll go. Okay, now, let me just explain this, we, we had a contract five years in Santa Clara, we revisited because we got a second-hand vehicle for them, which is a pumper, it can be first on the scene, and they've raised their amount to cover it after five years, so it's an additional five thousand a year with a new five-year extender contract. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
What does that make the total of, thirty-five thousand?
Mary, uh.
We, we paid forty-five for it, so we.
No, no, what's the contract? I think it's.
Oh, fifty-one thousand.
Fifty-one thousand.
Right now, their contract is forty-one, I'm sorry, it, it stays the same for two years and it goes up three percent, stays the same.
But it goes up five, it's five thousand more.
Yep, we added, but it used to be forty-six thousand.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one thousand nine eighty-seven twenty-seven.
And there's escalators in that.
Thirty thousand dollars, this guy, that's a lot more than thirty thousand, what was that?
It used to be forty-five hundred dollars.
So there, there, that's working out well for all of us.
Also, the, the department has obviously Santa Claus one around today, and they have him tomorrow night in downtown sections. That's it for.
Okay, questions, everything, David? Okay, DPW, Bob?
If you missed any of these updates, I won't say about the Santa. About it.
Okay.
The usual winter stuff.
Very good, we don't even need a motion, do we, that's not even a review.
I don't think so.
It's just a discussion point, okay, thanks, Bob.
Yep.
Mark, water.
Thank you, Mayor.
Waste water.
I'm looking for, uh, the board to approve me moving money in my budget, I agree on his budget, okay?
Trustee LaScala second, Trustee Hollingsworth. All those in favor, opposed, the ayes have it, let me just stop there a minute. When we put the budget together for our June first, at the end of the year, during the year, you can transfer money from one item to another item as long as it's in the same budget grouping, and that's what Mr. Robillard is doing tonight to cover for one part of it. Go ahead.
Um, one quick update, we're back working on the water tank garage, and we did a bunch about a year ago, and then we got pulled off of there for other work, but we're back in there working, we're gonna make a little shop out of it, put our generator or whatever, that way we'll have more room in our big garage.
Just on Park Street?
Um, Park, yep. In, in the back, repeated, yeah, the back half of that building will be torn down.
Okay.
The whole play, everything rot anyway, and we keep nothing in that room anyway. When we get warm weather, maybe March, April, we'll tear that out, that back half of the building off, keep the garage.
Not replace it.
No, we don't really need it for anything, they have the original pump equipment back nineteen twenty-two, and they put the original tank in. We've taken everything out of there into the new building, we're gonna keep the garage which they built like eighty-three or eighty-four, we'll keep that.
Further questions for Mark?
Yeah, I wanted to thank you, Mark, for, uh, helping out at the park, putting in them pumps.
No problem, yeah, we took them out too.
Yeah, we took them out, we seen that, we put them back in May.
Yeah, but they're in the shop, I know.
Alright, thanks.
They're warm. Actually, that worked out pretty good.
Now, you gonna finish that back part, where the pipes come out?
We've already done.
They're already done.
We did before, yeah, yep. French drain, yeah, they're all tied in.
French, they're all tied in? We got some more for you.
Mark, we booked that, you know, how Jen are talking about, we put dugout drains in, with the upgrade to the field, each dugout got a new pump and drainage, French drain, they're all tied in and plumbed and wired, line crew, thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
It used to be like a dry well that went, that it just leaked into.
I'll give you an update, what we did at the park.
It just collapsed, so we sent the, the baton down there. We started sucking up boots. All sorts.
Baseballs?
Actually, none.
No, no, baseballs, but like, like old boots, like crazy old boots and all, like all sorts of stuff.
Before we found one of those, I said, jumper.
You know, we're never gonna get another dry well in here, you know, without tearing up a bunch of stuff.
So what everybody's talking about here is at the ballpark, we're gonna have a, a, a minor, uh, class baseball team playing here next year, the River Pigs, and we've upgraded our dugouts that we used to have long before most everybody at this table, and maybe the exception of me and Mr. LeBlanc, remember, a few do.
I remember.
But we've re-brought the dugouts out, you see them, if you walk down by the park, but there's drains in there for water, and they were plugged up, now they're all tied into our system, so we're in good shape.
So what, they, they built that, when did they build those, those dugouts?
Thirty-two.
Nineteen forty.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two?
Mister.
Well, Leon worked on it.
I'm all in dirt, I can remember that.
Any other questions for Mark? Yes, sir, Mr. Hollingsworth.
Mark, is there any, any, any updates on the well, new well development?
Uh, nothing to report.
Okay.
We're, working on it.
Okay.
Nothing to report, thank you, Clint.
There's nothing negative, let's see what happens.
Yeah, good. Pretty important, thank you.
We're on it, we just.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just meeting on, on Monday.
Oh.
Thank you, Mayor, just miscellaneous updates.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if anybody noticed today, but the steel is finally flying down at the new garage, and, uh, there's some standing, and, uh, should see some.
Well, I want Trustee LeBlanc to hear this, I didn't know.
Should see some, uh, significant, uh, progress in the next three weeks.
I wanna thank you, sir, I was down there observing the operation.
You were?
Yes, they weren't moving very fast.
Okay.
They were on watch.
I'm sorry, they were on.
Look, we will go ahead and.
And, uh, obviously, we have the village all decorated, and, uh, everybody seems to be pretty happy with the new, uh, snowflakes on the boulevard, so. They went out a couple times, we had some, uh, faulty GFI in there, they got a little moisture in them, but it should be corrected now.
Great comments from all the community about those, and people from out of town.
They, you guys, you know, how do those things come about? Let's, 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 let's give a little credit.
Well, there's, there's probably, you know, there's maybe, uh, well, Mary had something to do with it, and I think, um, trustees.
It was a gift.
A trustee's significant other, maybe the one on the end to your left.
Maybe.
No, he's not a trustee. Maybe Leon's wife had something to do with it, just a suggestion, and things progressed from there, and thought that maybe they would look good down there and spruce it up and.
Spruce the junction up.
That's where they came, and, uh, everybody likes it, so.
That was my turf, big guy. I would like to pack, Taylor. Drive around here, I don't think everybody used to decorate their house. Maybe we should start doing that. I can't afford electric bills.
One question, on the lights out at the, with the Moody Bridge, is that all taken?
Yeah, so, uh, that whole street, the street lighting circuit that went, it goes through the concrete of the bridge and then conduit underneath it to both ends, and it services all the lights by, uh, Racked River Outfitters. A couple lights passed there to that transformer, the, uh, New York State DOT, when they paved this road, and then they had to change out the guardrails, they hired out, they subcontracted to another company to install the guardrails, and when they did that, even though they did a UFPO, which is called Before You Dig, we went out and painted all of our underground lines, their company shoved the guardrail when they installed it through our power line that fed all the streetlights to the bridge, and that's why they were out for that amount of time, but, uh, it took us about a week to get everything done, we had to dig it all back up, replace the conduit, replace almost fifteen hundred feet of wire, and, uh, we got them all back on, and we changed the light heads to LEDs because when we work out there, we have to stop traffic, so we have to block off, takes much more time and more men, so we changed the LEDs, we don't have to go back. And we were, we kept track of everything that we did out there, and we were reimbursed by the company that caused the accident, we've already been paid.
Great, good. Thank you, further questions for Michael? Okay, Mary, treasurer's report.
I have permission to pay the bills, happy to report that it's a lower figure than last month, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, quarter nine dollars and thirty cents, and also to approve the abstracts of month of November.
Is there a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion on the protest, because the last three months I've asked not to pay the bills, and no, we only paid the protests.
Trustee LaScala makes the motion second, Trustee Hollingsworth, uh, questions, comments? Trustee LeBlanc?
No, I'll save it for executive, Mr. Mayor, I'm very upset.
Uh, all those in favor, opposed, the ayes have it.
Uh, we heard from Nikon today, or yesterday, that the new allowable growth, uh, levy growth factor for next budget, and when it was a fiscal year, it starts to first, it's gonna be one point seven eight, so, snap two percent, one point seven eight, so.
So let me just say, I said this last year, and wanna say it again this year, we're working on the, we'll start working on the budget in January, there is no local government in this state that's gonna be able to prolong, maintain the two, it's not even two percent. That means if we don't have a super bowl, we can't override, uh, can't go to more than one point seven eight percent, and the cost of the Potsburg Press Republican went from a dollar to a dollar and a quarter, that's twenty-five percent, that's just a newspaper. That's not paper clips, that's not tires, that's not gas, so local governments will not be able to meet the tax cap much longer, because you take money out of your contingency and pretty soon you don't have contingency. Just like if you rob your piggy bank, Leon, after a while, there's nothing left in the piggy bank.
She nanny threw me under the bus again.
We haven't managed to stay underneath the tax cap for very long.
On your, you're done now.
And we will continue to work at trying to keep under the tariff cap, I just.
It's gonna be.
It's, it's, it's not gonna be an easy one this year, it's gonna be a lot of unhappy.
I just want people to understand that, it's not easy. Uh, okay, uh, Mary?
Uh, I'd like, I'm not really a hundred percent sure if I still need to get your authorization every year, but I'd like to bring.
Let's do it.
Get to your attention to, to offer an insurance buyout for those employees that have spouses that have sponsored insurance plans, it's, it's a, it's a large savings to everyone.
Trustee, Trustee LaScala second, Trustee LeBlanc, further discussion, all those in favor, opposed, the ayes have it.
I have one more thing, um, can you guys approve that local law number two, I'd rather put it on the agenda. I know we closed the hearing, but now if you could approve it.
Okay, now we need a motion to approve local law number two of the year two thousand and nineteen, allowing the state of New York to move the handicap or to add an handicap part of the spot here, it's a new one from Main Street. Trustee LaScala second, with my Trustee Maroon, all those in favor, discussion? Opposed, the ayes have it. I don't think we need an executive question. I wanna thank all the students for coming tonight, if you ever have questions, you can call me, call any of the trustees, or Mary, and we're glad to answer them, and, uh, I wanna get a picture with Riley Hillis in front of this thing before we go, thank you all for coming, thank you, meeting adjourned.
And God, well done again.